Okay. At this time, I would like to call to order this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, April 29, 2020. And at this time, we've asked to have a roll call, please.
One moment. Commissioner Wittrin. Commissioner Wittrin, I believe we see him?
Yep, we do.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Waidilla?
Here.
Commissioner Mamone? I believe we saw him earlier. We'll just double check on that. Commissioner Prickett?
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox? No, we just may have to unmute him. Commissioner Glance, if you can hear me?
Yep, here.
Okay. One moment, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Wilcox?
Here.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Mamone is just sought to rejoin the meeting, so let me check on him real quick. Commissioner Mamone, can you hear us? Try again.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, thank you. All right, we were just doing roll call, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, we will call the meeting to order and we will have a pledge allegiance. And at this time, if possible, could you please stand for the pledge allegiance? And Commissioner Waidilla will be leading us this evening.
My pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
A for effort.
Okay.
Once again, real quick, Mr. Chair, if you are not actively speaking, if you all can try to mute yourselves, if you have that capability, otherwise, we will try to do it administratively here, but thank you for your cooperation.
Okay, a couple of house items we get going tonight. First one is Commissioner Rosenbarker has resigned. And we have called up Commissioner Mamone from the Reserve Unit, and he is with us this evening, and we are excited to have him aboard. So, welcome to you. And the other item is Commissioner Rosenbarker's also served as vice chair for this body, and so we have a vacancy there, and typically, that vacancy is filled at the next regular meeting. However, this is not a regular meeting, this is a special meeting. I did have a request from a commissioner to ask if we could table that item until the next regular meeting. Is there anyone opposed to moving that piece of business to the next regular meeting? Okay, great. And I will also ask, I don't know if we have anyone in the waiting room, if there's any published comment this evening on a non-agenda item? Get none in there? Okay, great. Okay, with that, we will move on to the minutes from February 19, 2020, regular meeting. And did everyone receive a copy of those? And does anyone have any corrections?
Give him one minute.
My apologies. Very well, are you asking for some comments about the minutes?
Okay. In the minutes? In the minutes specifically?
Yes, this was my question, are you asking for some comments or correction about the minutes from February 19? Yes, if I may, yes, a couple of corrections that I think are noteworthy. On page seven, the report said that I was asked to switch from 30 days to 15 days because it would make it difficult for the applicants. That's not, that was not what I meant, or if you come out of the way, I apologize. My point was, was I was suggesting that it might be difficult to short for the staff, not for the, not for the applicants. Because what I'm concerned is that there is a state requirement for 30 days, so the state has imposed a 30 days. And so, while I can understand and I can appreciate to try to go faster, I don't know that the requirement needs or must be codified. If we aim for 15 days, very well, but I'm not sure that it is sensible to change a language imposed by ORS, which is ORS 227-1722, and publicly say we're going to be shorter than that, because if we do not, and we fail the deadline, then we're a problem. So, again, while I can appreciate to try to expedite the process, I don't think there is much to gain, and so I would suggest a conservative approach. So, my statement was not 15 days will make it difficult for the applicants, will be difficult for our staff if and when the volume of application become too much. And if we are able to do it in 15 days or in seven, very well. So, that was page seven, I'm sorry, page five. On page seven, the statements say that, the minutes say, Mr. Mamone said that he was concerned about expanding non-conforming uses and would like to learn more about how these works in Troutdale. In Gresham, the code is very generic. That's not my word, at least it's not, but if they come out of the way, I apologize. The code is not very generic in Gresham, the code is lenient, to the extent that unlike the great majority municipality that have an all-in, all-out approach to non-conforming use, Gresham has a much more lenient approach. The direction towards compliance works at times very well. So, there was my intent to say that, and that's what I think I said. So, it was, go ahead.
I question, what if we said in Gresham, the code provides room for discretion? Just took out the, you know, a very generic, the code provides room for discretion so they are able to shape future developments to match community values? Would that be more appropriate?
Again, I would like to avoid the word generic, because I've never used the word generic. I know that what they are used initially is lenient. We are more lenient, we are not inflexible. Our approach is not all-in, all-out, there is more going towards compliance. But again, there are specific situations, and they do not apply to everything, because the rationale for introducing non-conforming uses is very specific, is a very sensible approach to a standing situation that need to be rectified, and so, do not offer themselves to every potential situation, like the example where somebody was making last time at the meeting, what if a restaurant need to expand? Well, the problem by go, the problem by selecting individual situation as a planning commission is that we open the door also for the unwelcome and unwanted users that need to be eliminated by the process of introducing non-conforming use. So, if they can be rectified in a different way, having a zoning distribut is much more open, makes use than this, and that's what the intent, but again, for the intent of the minutes, my word was not generic, it is lenient.
Okay, then how about we replace word generic with lenient?
Thank you very much, yes, yeah. But the conversation remains later to be done about the value of a full chapter about how to bypass the intent of a non-conforming use compliance.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if the staff can suggest that we call each commissioner individually, just to keep orders, just to make sure from a muting and unmuting perspective, we can keep order on that. Mr. Wilcox, I believe you informed staff that you were intending to abstain on this vote because you were not here, can you confirm that?
That's correct, Chris.
Okay, thank you. Should we call staff, do you want staff to call the commissioners for the comment, or do you wish to do?
I think it's on Commissioner Prickett.
One moment.
Yes.
Yes. Any corrections?
No, I don't have any.
Okay.
I'm just curious, I didn't have any changes, but I'm curious what we were looking to change on page five.
I don't know that it was so much, we were looking to change something, we were having a discussion about possibly reworking a couple of chapters.
Okay, I thought he said that what he put, what is reflecting that he said here was not what he said. Did I misunderstand that?
That was for page seven, I think.
Yeah, that was seven.
My apologies again, if you're referring to my comment about page seven, 30 days versus 15 days, my comments were that going from 30 days as approved by state to 15 days would make it difficult for staff, not for applicants. If the volume of application become too much to handle, 30 days as a specific rationale to allow staff to do it, does not mean where we have to take 30 days, does not mean the staff has to take 30 days. If you want to aim for less, very well, but to put it as a prescription, which is half the time as imposed by the state, it. That's all, that's all. If you can, you can do it in two days if you're able, but I'm not suggesting we're going to apply the application in two days.
I understood that, I just didn't understand if you needed to have any of the content in the meeting minutes changed to reflect what you said.
Yes, the word that I would like to ask is difficult not for the applicants, difficult for staff, that was it, because the rationale changed.
Propose, let me make that change in a word capacity.
Okay.
On page five. Okay, anything else, Commissioner Mamone?
Yes.
Okay. And let's see, Commissioner Wittrin, anything?
No, I had nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Waidilla?
I have nothing.
Okay. And with that, we'll have to do a roll.
Yeah, we need a motion and a second, so if anybody wishes to make a motion, please unmute themselves, it's also for a second, please unmute yourself.
I moved that we accept the minutes for February 19, 2020, as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes from February 19, 2020.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, since we have the six commissioners intending to vote all on video, a show of hand, and we can claim it from a staff comment, that could be cleaner version.
As amended. Okay, and show of hands, all in favor? Oppose?
And Mr. Wilcox was abstaining from that vote, the 6-0-1 was the vote.
Okay, thank you. Get myself organized here. Okay, the matter for us this evening is case file LU0009-2020 FedEx parking lot expansion, Lot 1, tri-variant site development review, and VECO. This is a type three hearing. And I would like to explain a little about the process we will be following for the hearing. The Planning Commission is an appointed seven-member volunteer body of Troutdale citizens. Members of the Planning Commission are Troutdale residents who've been appointed by the city council. They serve four-year terms, they are strictly volunteers, and receive no pay for their services. The Planning Commission serves as the citizen committee for the review of land use applications and various land use related matters within the city. Items which the Planning Commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, the Planning Commission makes a final decision. For other applications, they are simply making a recommendation to the city council, who renders the final decision. Tonight's application is a type three quasi-judicial public hearing. The Planning Commission will be the deciding body for this application. Quasi-judicial public hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law and procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code. The hearing proceeds as follows. City staff presents their report, which includes the political criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in the land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the comprehensive plan, development code, or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. The Planning Commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponents, then by opponents, then by any parties neutral to the application. Not knowing this evening the order of people that will be testifying, we will, these may be out of order as far as proponents and opponents and neutral parties. An opportunity though will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by participants during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission must grant the request either by continuing the public hearing to a future date, or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the Planning Commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision-making. And before we open the public hearing, other than driving by the site, does any member have any expertise, contact, or bias to declare? No? Be shaking your heads. Okay, so this is good. And with that, we will open the public hearing for case file LU0009-2020 FedEx parking lot expansion, and this is a type three hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we'll turn it over to Irene Farrell from our office, who is joining us remotely. Irene, take it away.
Hey, good evening, planning commissioners, thank you for joining us today. We are here, as mentioned, to talk about the FedEx parking lot expansion. This is a variance request, which includes an addition, about five light poles that are 100 feet tall, and with this application, they are also accompanied by a site development review. Naturally, a site development review is a type-two application, but because it was submitted during the same time, it's packaged as one project, and we feel that we need to present that to you together. So, let's move forward, I will be sharing my screen. Are you, please nod if you can see the presentation on your, okay, sweet. So, it is LU009-2020. We have a new naming convention with the implementation of NRGOV. You might be used to seeing a different numbering sequence that we used before, but with NRGOV, we are moving forward with this naming convention. Okay. So, the property is the FedEx property that is located just north of 84 in the Troutdale Reynolds Industrial Park. It's mostly developed, and many of you have been on Planning Commission for a while to know that this application was also, had also been reviewed by Planning Commission. There was three, about three land use applications, one back in 2012, and then 2013, and then the final one being in 2014. The project in 2014 is exactly the same scope as this project, however, that approval didn't get implemented, so the decision for that application become, became expired. So, they're coming in again to add five more light poles and extend into Lot 1. So, this application is on the general industrial zoning area. The overlay zoning for this is also the VECO. On the southern portion of this lot on Swigert Way, there is a section that is VECO, and they're also planning to expand to this part of the lot, which also has VECO considerations as well. The other area is also the airport landing field. We have heard from Port of Portland and the FAA about this, and they have told us there was no concern on their end. So, this is the view of the site, as you can see, this area is pretty underdeveloped, and then the rest is FedEx, so that is the view from northwest Endow Road and northwest Swigert Way. So, what is being requested tonight, as I mentioned, it's a variance for 100-foot light poles in the general industrial area. Our Troutdale municipal code requires light poles to be a maximum of 50 feet, and the variance is more than 30%, so this is why we're requesting a type-three variance. There is already light poles on site, they're 100 feet tall, based on approved case file on 13-015. So, this is an addition to what they have requested. In their application, why would they have to go for a second round, is because in 13-015, they have requested a specific number of light poles, and that is the reason why we can't extend that variance that they've already implemented, so they have to come for a new variance, since their number was specific. The site development review in the general industrial is for the expansion of the parking lot for Lot 1, and it is also impacting VECO. So, in part of your criterias, which we'll review today, we will also look at the VECO considerations for our criteria in making our decision, and recommending our decision. So, what is not being requested is a zoning change, the existing zoning is to remain the same, and there is no building on site, really, it's just the parking, the truck parking, so it's not really even parking lot for staff, it's just the storage of trucks or FedEx, because their business is just growing so much based on the e-commerce that we've been seeing. These are examples of the existing light poles. This one is provided by the applicant, and it's what is already existing there. These are some drawings to show another instances of that, the poles that they're looking to implement. The application and applicable criterias are below, these are from our Troutdale Development Code, and then Fire Code, and also the State Code. In addition to this, there's also our Troutdale Municipal Code with regard to the lighting, and also the tree removal. Okay, type-three application, so our timeline was that back in November 5, we had a pre-application with the applicant. On January 23, the applicant submitted materials, and this was under LU002-2020. You might remember the last Planning Commission that we had, we were to review this application under a different file name. This is because the applicant, based on our review, there were items that were missing, and the applicant decided to resubmit the material to satisfy some of the items that staff found to not have met some of our design criterias, specifically chapter eight. So, the applicant resubmitted the materials on March 24, and on April 7, it was incomplete, it was also sent for a notice of application the same day, and today, we are here for the public hearing. If it is approved, the applicant shall apply for building permits for the expansion of the parking lot, and for electrical and all other related, building-related permits. The agencies which we contacted was our own planning department, Public Works, the Multnomah Transportation Planning, Gresham Fire, Port of Portland, Multnomah County Drainage District. Another group that was, that we contacted, and we didn't hear back in time, was also the state regarding the wetland disturbance that we, that this will impose, but we did hear back from their comments today, and we can also show you some of their, their comments, if you like. Okay, so the benefits and arguments in favor, it is approved by the FAA, it will not directly impact adjacent properties, because it's where it's located, and the existing light poles has proven to be not injurious to the surrounding area, and there is also, this will assist in the increased demand of e-commerce. The drawbacks that we realize is also it sets a further precedent for high variances for properties located in that area. There is Amazon and other industrial warehouses located on site, so we feel that that might be kind of a precedence that all the other industrial warehouses can use. Any questions so far? You can raise your hand if you do. Okay, then I will move forward with the design criterias.
Got a question?
Yes.
Can you show on that map where the VECO area is, or some of the wetlands that you're talking about?
Back in the, this map?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the VECO area is here, I can also pull up, let me see, the drawings that they provided, the site plan details, just give me a second.
So, is all of Lot 1?
No, it's only like a small sliver of it. So, let me pull up that. It's really hard to see. Are you able to see this map right here, or do I need to reset?
I can see it.
Okay, so this area right here is the VECO, right down in this corner, and then north of this area too. So, let me pull up. There's also another report they, which they provided. It's less than 30%, so it's about 23% of the site. Sorry for my really fast scrolling, but this area right here, so in the corner of Lot 1, that's the vegetation corridor. And it's, it's Tributary A and also Salmon Creek, that's the name of the wetland.
That doesn't look like 23%, that just looks like a really small amount.
So, 20, the way that our code reviews it is that it's 23% of impact that they are proposing to do on-site of the total area of VECO, so not the actual total area of the site, the total area of the VECO that's existing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and in my presentation- Yeah, and in my presentation and findings too, it has the numbers of the square footage of the total area onsite and also the total Vico too. Chris, I think you're still on mute.
Yes, I am.
Okay. Anything to add, any clarification to? Oh, actually, let me finish this. Sorry, this is a new system. Okay, so any other questions regarding that? Or should I move on to the design criteria, to the decision criteria, sorry?
Arini, this is just our question. I'm sure I understand. So the expansion of lot thirty percent of the total area of the site?
No, so the the way that the Vico, the vegetation corridor, is that it's thirty percent of the total vegetation corridor area.
Okay.
You're impacting about twenty-three percent of that.
Oh, we're talking about Vico, okay. No, I was, yeah, I understand. Thank you, yes, I was thinking about what triggers the rationale for a for a type three variance.
The trigger of the type three variance is the light poles that you're that they're implementing onsite. But the way that our code reads too is that once it's up, once you apply for a whole application, it kicks into whatever it's attached to. So the site development review is attached to this variance of the type three application. This would naturally go as a type two application.
Okay, so it's elevated to the highest level. What why specifically is the pole a variance? This is because of the height, it's because of the number? Because I'm unclear on your finding D, if I understand correctly, but please correct me. The new five poles are added to the expansion area, correct? There are, there are, you said, already twelve foot light poles, but you said there are, they are bringing five new poles. Are these added to the expansion area?
So five is the new poles in the expansion area. There's already interesting ones that are above what the code required.
Okay, so the variance is not for the height of the poles, it's for the number of the poles?
The height of the poles, and they had initially asked for a variance for those existing poles as well.
Got it. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, I will move on to the decision criteria if there's any other, if there's no other questions. Okay.
Arini, one one quick question before you jump in. I think Tanny had a question.
Yeah, I was also, Arini, aren't some of the percentages off because of the off-site mitigation that's been done there?
I'm not understanding what you mean.
There was off-site mitigation, so a larger percentage of that lot can be developed.
Yes.
If you're referring to the the trip, the overall development, the port did a lot of the the mitigation work already.
Right.
What what was remaining on the the site, that's kind of what the percentages we're talking about. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Chris.
Sure.
Okay, any other question? Okay, so with the decision criteria, I'm going to go forward with the variance section. I'm going to summarize some of these decision criteria because we have a lot to go through tonight. Not, I'm not going to read them word by word. But the number A, special circumstances or conditions, including but not limited to size, lot shape, topography, shape of the building, applied to the property development or to the intended use that are not typical of the general conditions in the surrounding area. So the surrounding area is a general industrial facility, and the site currently does have those light poles that has been useful to their nighttime operation. The surrounding area is also zoned for general industrial and also is of industrial warehouses like Amazon and all the other industrial warehouses that's existing there. So we believe that this criterion is met. There's no setback requirements because they're not proposing any buildings. And this application had also gone through an approve approval back in twenty fourteen under fourteen dash zero one zero four one. Decision criteria B is the variance authorized will not be injurious to adjacent properties or the surrounding neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. So we reviewed the photobantric plans, and it shows that there is a little bit of spill into the adjacent property. But the adjacent property is sundial road, and the the overall light spill is actually really minimal and encroaches an open field that is not suited for future development anyways. So the road does not have, and the sundial road actually also doesn't have adequate street lighting. So we determined that this light spill will not be injurious to the public as such this criterion is met. C, the variance authorized will be consistent with the general purpose and intent of the provision for which a variance is sought. This request will be consistent with the general purpose of TMC eight point two six one zero one zero of regulating lighting in the commercial and public areas with outdoor lighting features. The lighting produced from the poles will be confined for the property mostly and will be limited to truck parking lot. As such, this criterion is met. C, the variance is the minimum necessary to relieve a practical difficulty with full compliance to avoid and or minimize the resulting hardship. Oh, what did I do? Sorry, went a little too far in my notes.
Arini, excuse me, what is the maximum height allowed by code?
Fifty feet.
Wow, they're doubling it.
Sorry?
They're doubling the height as requested.
Why for type three variance application? And so the finding for this criteria is that we find, based on the site plan, the requested five foot light poles are only to be installed in the expanded parking lot, which is already developed, which is, does not have any light poles that are existing.
Got it, but you have a judicial judicial precedent. Actually, you have you have two judicial precedents where you have allowed this kind of variance throughout the site.
For the specific.
Because the twelve already one hundred foot light poles.
Yeah.
Got it, okay, thank you.
That is all the decision criteria with the variance. We are moving forward with the site development criterias. The application complies with all applicable provisions in their underlying zone and overlay zones.
Arini, can we interrupt you real quick? Sorry, I think Mr. Stafford wanted to say something real quick.
If we could allow staff to finish their report for a section and then solicit questions, and we'll ask our questions at that time.
Okay.
Go ahead, Arini.
Okay, so with the decision criteria on site development review, we found that the applicant does comply with all the provisions under general industrial zoning district. In addition to the zoning district, there are two overlay zones, which is the vegetation corridor and also the flood management land area, also known as the special flood hazard area. The applicant has addressed decision criterias for the Vico, and the applicant have also shown that it will not disturb the flood, the flood plain that is onsite. So therefore, that will not be impacted. And we will be discussing the Vico standards in later on tonight. So the proposal includes required upgrades, if any, to existing development that does not comply with applicable land use district standards pursuant to non-conforming uses. The proposal does not include any upgrades that does not comply with the general industrial. The current site is not not non-conforming. The proposal also complies with all the applicable site design and development standards of this code, such as landscaping and parking. Staff reviewed site and standards from our chapters eight and referred to the findings in fact provided with each having correspondence to relevant standards. So the findings in which we provided in your packet, it goes into detail about how it met the parking requirements, and also it's it's rather long. So we thought it'd be in your best interest that we say we do, we do believe that they meet all the criterion for that chapter. Any questions on that? Oh, wait, I'll wait until it's done. So the proposal meets all existing conditions of approval for the site or use as required to provide prior land use decisions as applicable. The finding, other land use applications that we received under thirteen dash zero five one and also twelve zero six zero, there were no outstanding conditions of approval that we found to need to be addressed at this point. The, based on our records, it seems that the applicant have met all the conditions of approval for those two projects. As mentioned before, the fourteen zero four one didn't get built, so it expired. Therefore, their conditions of approval is invalid. So right now, we're going to move forward with the vegetation corridor because there is a vegetation corridor onsite. This decision criteria, there are quite a number of them, but I'll go through them as efficiently as I can. The applicant shall demonstrate that no reasonable practical alternative design or method of development exists that would have lesser impact on the vegetation corridor and slope than the one provided. So we reviewed the site plan, and it illustrated heavy mitigation onsite and minimize the impact of Vico. They really tried to hug away from the Vico as much as they can with the new development. As such, we believe that this application does meet the criterion. Number two, if no such reasonable practicable alternative design or method of development exists, new structures or development shall be limited in scale as specified in the section, so that impacts on the vegetation corridor and slope districts are the least necessary, and the plans shall include restoration, replacement, rehabilitation, or of vegetation corridor and or slope associated to the site. So the total area of impact for Vico, as we mentioned before, is forty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-eight square feet, which is about twenty-three percent of the total Vico site and falls below the thirty percent of threshold for Vico. As such, this criterion is met. Sandy, these are the calculations that we have for the total disturbed areas, Salmon Creek and Tributary A. So number three, the applicant shall provide mitigation to ensure that impacts to the functions and values of the vegetation corridor and integrity of the slope will be mitigated or restored to the extent practicable. FedEx has chosen to do option two. In our review, we did notice there is a discrepancy between two of their documents. So their mitigation and restoration plan doesn't really match the Vico compliance memo, but it's really minimal, and it's missing about two shrubs. So we think that this condition is met, it's just conditionally met. So we, if with the conditions of approval, FedEx is required to just fix those two documents for us. Okay, number four, the U satisfies all applicable standards of chapters four point five flood management area, erosion control, water quality standards, and stormwater management. So as I mentioned before, the project does not impact our flood plain that is onsite. And comments regarding erosion control and stormwater management was deferred to the Public Works Department. Public Works Department recommended approval with some conditions. As such, this criterion is met. It's undetermined because we can't make that decision for Public Works, but it's more, it's met. Number five, all excavation over three feet in depth shall require submission of an engineering report addressing hydrology, geology, and soils of the site as specified in this chapter. So no excavation is proposed for this project that is over three feet in depth within the Vico. As such, the standard is met. And then we move forward with another decision criteria for the vegetation corridor, four point three one five B about addition and alteration of development. The addition or alteration is allowed in the underlying zoning district. It is because it's a warehouse and trucking is permitted under general industrial zoning district. Number two, the additional alteration does not encroach closer to the protected water feature than the existing structures, roadway, driveway, accessory use. As provided in their Vico memo, the proposed alternation of the vegetation corridor will not result in the encroachment of Salmon Creek or Tributary A, and the mitigation and restoration will provide additional functional benefits to the creek. As such, this criterion is met. Number three, the addition of alteration satisfies the other applicable standards of this chapter. Chapters five point six erosion control, water quality standards, and five point seven stormwater management of the scope. As I mentioned before, the city of Troutdale's Public Works were deferred to provide this comment. It's their comments was provided in the staff report packet, and they did recommend approval with conditions. So we have recommend approval with condition as outlined in the findings of fact provided to you. Right now, if you have any questions to me, I'll be happy to answer it. If there are some some questions which the applicant would be better suited, then I would defer that to our applicant, Chris Tony.
Arini, for the for the benefit of of again, keeping the meeting in order, the chair will call on each planning commissioner to have any questions for staff at this point.
Okay, Commissioner Glenn.
Yep.
Any questions?
Yep, I have a couple of them. On the decision criteria, there was talk about the light spill, unused field?
Yeah.
I'm not saying that it's a reason to deny it in any reason, but isn't that injurious? I mean, because the whole idea behind keeping the lights lower and less and all that type of stuff is to give wildlife someplace to go?
Yeah, so the I shared to you what FedEx has provided in terms of the new hundred foot light fixture. These are the locations for that. The light spill is really minimal. It's really more type this side, and this is the sundial road.
I say, I don't have an issue nor consider it as something that would, you know, cause this to be denied. I'm just not sure that, saying that additional light into unused, which I'm assuming is going to mean to remain wild fields, is not injurious. I don't think that's something without some type of report or anything else that we can say.
I believe that might be, I should have clarified more, it's unused right now, and it will be expanded into, it will be used.
Okay, I thought I heard you say that it would not be used.
It's unused currently, so. Are more light poles on the other, sorry, my mouse is really slow. There are more light poles located here, but they're all the existing hundred foot poles, and these are unused lands too here. So I'm sorry for my lack of clarification on that.
Okay. And then I also, on the analysis section of this, is that something that does it based on your recommend, does it form a basis for your recommendation? I felt like things like including, you know, generic, it helps with e-commerce, isn't, I don't know, I guess appropriate for us, it might help businesses, I'm all for that. And we don't talk about things like how having those lights, you know, could reduce crime, increase the safety, other types of things. So I'm just curious if that analysis is important in our decision.
No.
Can I answer that, Arini?
Yes.
I guess it it comes down to values judgment, Commissioner Glenn, and I see your point. It's maybe not a code criteria, but I think you could always make the argument about land being used for its highest and best use. And in that case, given the industrial zoning, given the legacy of the development of the property adjacent to it, which is owned by the same company, as long as the applicant can demonstrate that they are building according to the code provisions, then in a way, yes, that is a byproduct of it, that you're going to have an increase in commerce. But I think the understated goal is that the land is being developed at its highest and best use. So that would be maybe an argument you could hang your hat on. And maybe the spillover or the the side benefit, if you will, is an increase in e-commerce and potentially economic traffic in Troutdale.
I just thought it seems like an odd group of items to put in an analysis with some big holes. And so if it doesn't matter towards any of our criteria, then it doesn't really matters.
Anything else, Commissioner?
I believe she muted herself, so.
So, let's move on to Commissioner Witter.
Several times in the re- several times in the report, it mentioned that this was just going to be for truck parking. And I'm not sure if it makes that much difference, but is there anything to stipulate that it's going to stay truck parking? Or could it become employee parking? Could they use it for a different use? Once this is approved.
Well, the way that the layout is for this specific parking is, it's, there are specific lengths on how parking spaces are to be. So when building gets this and they'll see the grading too, it's, it's not as easily converted into employee parking because of just the way that the layout would be. So the truck parking is really just additional storage. Based on my understanding of their narrative, additional storage to assist in the flow of traffic for the site. And if there is any increase in employees, then they would need to come to us and let us know because there is, that means there is an increase in also the parking spaces required on our code that FedEx needs to provide.
I can kind of address that. So the, the new parking is going to be strictly for trailer and truck parking. When we originally had this put in back in two thousand fifteen sixteen, we were actually adding a whole nother wing onto the building for loading and unloading. And with that plan, we were adding more employee parking up in this area, up in the corner on the north side. You can kind of see the, where the employee parking is now, there's a big chunk of it taken out in the upper left, upper right corner. That was going to be additional employee parking at that time. This plan doesn't impact employee numbers. Their numbers are based on the number of loading doors they have, that's how they staff their facilities. So this parking lot is strictly for truck parking and that's the reason for the hundred foot poles is so that the truck drivers can, don't have shadows and everything, based on everything that's going to be stored there. It's also easier for people walking through their stuff to, you know, kind of see, be visible and see what's going on.
That was all I had.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Wilcox.
I have nothing for Arini.
Okay. And Commissioner Prickett.
There was some statements by transportation, Multnomah County, transportation about trip generation, is that been satisfied?
So we had talked to Multnomah County about their condition on the previous application and they say that they will still need to update the trip generation memo.
Okay, that's all I had.
Commissioner Waidilla.
I had a couple of questions on item three and four in the findings, but it is adequately explained in the staff presentation.
Commissioner Mamone.
Any other questions for staff?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, and I think I'm focusing crystallizing on what everybody else is. Just for a clarification, in, in your report, Arini, you say the expansion is for storage for trucks. So the first video question is, is this a permitted use in this area? It's generally indicted, so I must assume yes, but I better ask. And, and then. Twelve foot light poles, this is a question, of course, I'm elaborating out loud. There probably was a rationale, because I must imagine it was also for a safety rationale. There is employee parking law, they need four lights and they need four, but, but if this is indeed, and maybe the applicant can really, you know, elaborate on this, if this is really for just storage, and of course, when you say storage, I create an image in my mind. It is just for trucks to there. Part, is there rationale? There's for, for rationale to be. Go ahead again.
We're having some technical issues with you, Commissioner Mamone. And Arini, did you want to tackle that first question?
Yes, trucking is allowed in the general industrial area. So the use for truck storage is allowed, a permitted use.
And, and when we say storage for trailers and trucks, it's more when trailers come in, they're going to be stored here until they can be moved over to get unloaded or loaded and then they'll be off the site again. Just the amount of volume they're doing, they need to have additional space where they can put trailers and dollies while they're waiting to get unloaded or loaded.
Mr. Tome. I appreciate your comments. Procedurally, there's just a couple of things we have to do before you go. So if you can hang on for me here for a couple of minutes. Okay.
You're going to wait?
Yeah, I'm going to wait and at this time, we would like the applicant to speak and that would be Chris Tome. And sir, if he could state your information for the record and then go ahead and start.
My name's Chris Tome with Steel Associates Architects in Bend and we're the architects of record for this project with FedEx. Like I was saying before, the original submittal back in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen included the parking on lot one, as it is shown today. It also had included a whole of building expansions, some building remodeling and additional parking on the site on lot two. Since then, they didn't do, they got it all approved, they didn't do the construction. So now they're, we're coming back with, without the building addition and strictly parking expansion for their growing facility. And we've, you know, the hundred foot light poles, we, you know, we already have them on site. We like them for security reason and safety reason for the workers that are out in that area. And we've, you know, we've tried to maintain the VECO setbacks as best we could and stay out of the wetland areas up in the northeast corner of the site. We've met all the landscape requirements for the port requirements of fifteen percent. I think we're over that by quite a bit, actually.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know if there's any other questions I can answer.
Well, we'll see. And I guess I'll go through and ask each one of you if you have any questions of the applicant. Okay, and we'll start with Commissioner Mamone. Any questions for the applicant?
He's unmuted, but I don't know.
Sir, any questions for the applicant?
Yes, I have a question for the applicant.
Okay, great. Go ahead, sir.
Hello?
Yeah.
We can hear you.
Go ahead and ask your question.
We muted him, I'll, I'll check with him.
Yeah.
Mr. Mamone, if you can hear me, if you can type your question in to me, I'll relay it to the chair and we'll, we'll try to handle it that way.
Can you hear me, Chris, right now?
We can hear you, sir, but please, if you can, type, type a chat to me with your question and I'll relay it to the chair for the record.
Commissioner Witteren. Any questions for the applicant?
No questions at this time.
Okay. And Commissioner Glanz.
No questions, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Wilcox, any questions for the applicant?
No, nothing.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Prickett, any questions for the applicant?
I have none at this time.
And Commissioner Waidilla.
I have no questions.
Okay. I have one, which I'll go ahead and I guess ask now. Is your storm water a mechanical system with separation?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then it's charging into the ditch adjacent to your property?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do you know what triggered a four oh eight review, I can't? With the Armored Corps?
I believe it was the wetlands up on the site. I'd have to, I'd have to go back and check that.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Mamone had a question.
Okay, yes, question from Mr. Mamone. If, if this is just a storage area before the trucks are loaded and unloaded, why the need for a hundred foot high pole? Could it not be achieved with a fifty foot pole? And that would be directed to Mr. Tome.
Well, the need for the hundred foot poles are to prevent the, you know, to cast light over the, over the trucks and the dollies that are, are parked out there. So it doesn't cast shadows and provides a more visibility for drivers and people walking through the parking lot. It's FedEx's standard on most of their facilities.
All right, if that's it. If that's it, then we will say thanking to the applicant and, and now we will invite any members of the public wishing to speak. Okay, and we will start with you, sir.
Hi, this is Rich Allen. So this looks more appropriately like a staging area. And the question I have is, is this intended for just FedEx trucks? Or will contract trucks also be allowed to use it?
As far as I'm aware, it's only for FedEx.
Okay, well, the, the reason why I ask is if contract trucks may also use it, then that can alleviate some of the what you refer to as staging that goes on offsite. It may actually be a benefit. So, just a comment.
Yeah, it was never mentioned or discussed with the owners regarding staging in that area. My understanding was it was always used for just FedEx, FedEx delivery trucks.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other members of the public wishing to speak?
At present, Mr. Chair, there are two members of the public, although I believe they will be intending to participate in a discussion item later in the hearing.
Okay. With that, we would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move, close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Real quick for the record, can you identify who seconded this?
Sandy.
Thank you.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor, signify by and saying the word aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Public hearing is closed. Comment on the, on the lights. I happen to be one that was around when they proposed this years ago. Had a pretty impressive case for why they needed them to be a hundred feet.
Yeah, if you look at the shadow casting of a forty foot light pole as opposed to a hundred foot light pole, security measures are greatly enhanced by a hundred foot light pole.
I believe that Ms. Prickett has her hand up.
Sorry, sir? Commissioner Prickett, please.
I also remember when we did approve it the last time, there was a big concern about the employee's safety because those trucks are moving in and out and people aren't as tall as those trucks. So if they're in the shadow, you're not going to see them as quickly as if the pole was a hundred feet instead of fifty.
All right. Anyone else have any other comments?
Then with that, I would move to approve the findings of fact.
This is Sandy and I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve finding of fact for case file one LW zero 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 nine two zero two zero FedEx parking lot expansion, lot one trip. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, we'll do a roll.
Roll call.
A roll call. And we will start with Commissioner Glanz.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Witteren?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamone?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
And Commissioner Waidilla?
Yes.
Okay, that carries.
Mr. Chair, anybody?
I'm sorry, and I vote. Okay, and so now we need to wrap this up. Okay, so we'd entertain a motion for the rest of the package?
I have moved approval of the final order and decision.
This is Sandy and I'll second that.
Okay. And that is the final order, decision, conditions. Site developer U and various for LW zero 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 nine two zero two zero FedEx parking lot expansion, lot one. Lot 1. Okay, any discussion on that motion? All right. Commissioner Glanz?
Yes.
Commissioner Witteren?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamoné?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wydilla?
Yes.
And Commissioner Staffordson? Yes. That carries, thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Tomy.
Thank you.
All right.
There's so much time, we'll move on to our next item. Mr. Chair, if it pleases the commission, I would request we switch around the discussion items to discuss the second item, which is the PDC update on storage units, as we have some of the public online that probably want to continue. We'll defer the next one to the next session.
If no one objects, we will flip items A and B. And so we will start with B. And this is an update regarding storage use in Light Industrial Zone District. And? Okay.
Okay, can everybody see the screen? It should be a memo that was included in the packet. Okay?
Chris, it's a little hard to hear you.
Oh, let me try to move the microphone. Hang on one moment. Is that better?
Very much so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So this is going to be a matter that will become before, come before the planning commission in June, and that is a potential text amendment, looking at the concept of storage use as a primary use on industrial, light industrial zone properties. And to confirm, light industrial zoning, there's really three industrial zoning districts we have in the city. The vast majority of property in the city is actually general industrial, kind of like the application we just had before us. The light industrial areas, for point of reference, are really along Harlow Road that is basically in an area just immediately to I-84. One moment, I have to do something real quick on the meeting. Okay, sorry about that. The light industrial zoning district is largely off Harlow Road. There's also a couple of parcels over by the I-84 Corporate Center. So it's really kind of in the spirit, acts as a buffer between the residential and commercial areas of the city with the industrial areas of the city. So it's already kind of a transitory zoning district in itself. The history of storage in the city, and when we're talking about storage in this case, it's kind of through the prism of self-storage, mini-storage, if you will. We have three existing self-storage facilities in the city, one of which is in this zoning district, another is in downtown, just to the west of the intersection of 257th and the historic highway, which is actually in the mixed-office housing zoning district. And then we have one on Stark Street, which is a general commercial zoning district. These have come up before, they have been controversial at times, and there's a very complicated history of how the city council in particular views these types of facilities. One of the reasons we are bringing this matter before you is, well, it's twofold. One is we have significant continued interest from the market in the form of due diligence calls and interest to see whether or not storage facilities are allowed. That's the first one. And then the second thing that's kind of illustrating this concept is the idea of what storage is. You know, as it's been presented to Troutdale's Planning Commission and City Council historically, it's been largely in the form of mini-storage, kind of what we call fortress-style storage facility, where you drive in, you have maybe a garage or closet space or so forth, but it's kind of built in a fortress style. The nature of storage, though, can mean a lot of different things, though, too. It could be portable, as in, say, shipping containers. It could also be elevated. We are starting to see installations of storage occur in the metro that are two, three, four stories, that really mask themselves actually pretty well from a building design perspective. So as that market changes and as the demand has been identified based on the traffic that we're getting, we felt it was in your best interest to reconsider this and to bring it before council again for reconsideration. The folks that are online right now have particular interest in this facility, so I would encourage at some point, once the council, once the commission's had a chance, to ask staff some questions and kind of highlight your concerns or questions on it, then we can also allow those folks to provide comments or feedback for you as far as maybe what they're thinking on that. So hopefully you all have seen the memo and we will be happy to take any questions for staff right now, if you wish to do it sequentially, commissioner by commissioner, Mr. Chair, however you want to do that.
Okay. I guess I would probably start with a little history.
Sure.
Okay, and this was something that we had discussed in pretty good length when we were doing the development code rewrite. And we talked about mini-storage and this particular item is one that, if you remember, the council had an issue with. And their challenge with it was, they said that it didn't create enough jobs. It was taking up a lot of space, not a lot of jobs, and it was not something that they liked. Even though we have them, we have some of them already functioning, that was something that they didn't really support and it was pulled. And I guess I would say, I think it's probably something that we need to, we need to at least revisit this and either, you know, work through a decision or come up with a creative solution or whatever we decide to do.
And one thing that we're hoping for, from a staff perspective, based on your feedbacks tonight and some of the commentary moving forward, is when we do create a draft amendment for you, you know, where are those touch points? Where are those concerns? How do you define storage? Those are kind of the key questions, I think, we're trying to understand. Also, your comfort level within just this zoning district. We're not talking about citywide here, but within this light industrial zoning district, kind of along the periphery of the freeway, are you comfortable with it as a permitted use or a conditional use? Because that'll also have a bearing for any future applications, because obviously conditional use would come before this body.
How much of a demand is there for additional storage?
We get due diligence calls monthly.
Are we going around asking questions now?
We're heading that way. Okay. Commissioner Glanz?
I have a question. Isn't the area on the backside of Mount Hood Community College light industrial?
I believe we have that actually zoned as industrial park.
Right.
Which is a different zoning district. So that's not what we're talking about in that location.
Okay.
It's a very similar shade of gray.
Okay. Just as a two cents worth, this is one time I actually tend to agree with city council that, I mean, how much storage does Troutdale need? And I don't see that it doesn't take a lot of space and not provide a lot of jobs.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner?
I know, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Witteren, anything?
As we are putting more pressure on to have more multifamily homes in Troutdale, isn't the need for more storage going to be, be more accessible to, to our, you know, the people of Troutdale? I would think that we would want some sort of enhancement for the multifamily homes. It's my two cents.
In the form of storage?
In the form of storage, because if we have more multifamily homes with less storage, but we want to increase that, then we're going to have to have some options for the people in those residents.
Very good point.
So.
Anything else?
That's my, no, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Mamoné?
Yes, a question, thank you. Chris, this is a question for you, if I may, just as an explanation, understand a little bit better qualification. You sent your staff report that the proposal is to allow storage facilities as primary uses in light industrial, so as a principal permitted use in light industrial. But in your elaboration, then you suggested that potentially the commissioner might choose this as a conditional use, which, if not antithetical, are in opposite situation. So are we proposing an introduction of storage facility as a primary use in light industrial? Or yet it's up to discussion and we have to decide what grade of intensity we want? Because again, you talk about conditional use. And first question, the second question is, where are they allowed now in the city? Anywhere in a, in a light industrial or industrial?
Okay, thank you for your questions. So let me answer the second one first, because that's easy. Right now, it's been effectively written out of the code. Storage as a concept, if it's incidental to a primary business operation, of course, is allowed. If you're storing a work vehicle, if you're storing equipment like a backhoe, if you're on an impound lot. That's not the type of thing we're talking about. We're talking, just for clarity's sake, where your primary business, or one of the primary businesses on the property, is a storage facility that can be rented, leased, or in that fashion. So right now, it's not allowed anywhere in the city. And the three facilities where it has been permitted and approved are effectively grandfathered in, they're non-conforming. So as far as whether or not it should be a permitted...
Chris, my apologies.
Let me finish, let me finish real quick, please. As far as the permitted versus conditional use aspect of it, I think that's what we're trying to understand tonight, is what this commission's comfort level is. And then we would put a text amendment in place, a draft text amendment that you guys could chew on in June. And at that point, you can really have that discussion, whether you want this a conditional use or a permitted use. Conditional use, of course, would be tied with decision criteria already established in the code. If you wanted to do a permitted use, then it's effectively, you're turning it to, into a staff decision and just general site development review.
Okay, so then, that's why I was confused, because your language says allow facility as a primary land use, which, 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 in my mind, doesn't introduce you in the conversation. Your want is a, please, it's an immediate use. But secondly, you say right now we are not allowed anywhere as the city attorney voices opinion about this.
I'm sorry, what about an opinion of this, you said?
As the city attorney spoken about this, the fact that the council has prohibited.
Yes, yes, I think, but one thing to keep in mind, too, we do have, since the last time the councils really discussed this issue, we have five new city councilors on board. So you have a pretty high turnover of the last time they did it. So there may be changes in philosophy on that at the council level. And the second thing, again, what's prompting this is a high demand for this type of use. So it warranted at least reconsideration of it. I don't think it's a done deal necessarily.
Okay, thank you. And the question remains, the question remains, do we have a final comment by the city attorney in legally supporting the position of the council?
No, this is simply where we're looking at taking this and making it a permitted use, a conditional use, or a prohibited use.
Okay, yeah.
I understand, we tried to decide, but right now, if you've understood correctly, you told, you said that right now, storage facility are not allowed anywhere in the city of Troutdale. Am I correct?
Correct. That is correct, yes, and that has been, been verified by the city attorney.
Has been approved, deported legally.
It has been legally supported and defended, yes, sir.
Benis, very well, thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Wilcox?
Okay. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'd like to throw something out for consideration, I don't know how you'd enforce this or prohibit it. But we used to have a unit at the Troutdale Airport Storage, and there are people in there that are using it as a warehouse for their business, essentially. There's, you know, product racks inside and there's some UPS trucks actually making deliveries within the facility behind the gates. So, you know, that might speak to your staffing, since I'd like to get out, providing jobs, but you know, you've got someone who lives in an apartment and is running a internet business out of their storage, you know? So I just want to throw that out there.
We are aware of a couple of property owners or businesses that do exist, but based on our code compliance stance, it's usually complaint-driven, so until we receive a complaint, we don't investigate it, but we're aware of that, too. So part of this is also an ability for some of these operators to potentially come into legal conformance as well.
Commissioner Wilcox, that's a very good point and something that we should somehow incorporate into this, thank you.
And to your, to your other point, since you mentioned warehousing particularly, there is a definition for warehousing, and there's one for, potentially for storage. Warehousing really is for the purpose of, you know, like a wholesaler or distributor or things of that nature. But for the actual rental of space, that's really the specific delineation. It's not storage, it's more like mini-storage or partial storage on the site, not one user for the entire site.
Anything else, Mr. Wilcox?
No, that was it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Prickett?
My concern is height requirements, because the ones I've seen in Portland, they're three and four stories high and they're well-lit, so they do have a lighting spill out from them. And my concern is that if we get too tall, again, most, the one that you're talking about is in the airport, might be in the FAA field. But again, height requirement and lighting of these facilities are my concern.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Commissioner Wydilla?
I think they brought up some interesting points and it's something that we should be looking into, so we have answers.
Yes.
One question again for the group at large, Mr. Chair. One of the other concepts of storage, which I think our members of the public attending may be of interest, is the concept of not necessarily fixed storage, but more portable storage as far as like cargo shipping containers are concerned. While you wouldn't necessarily look at that type of storage solution for, if you're putting away your holiday decor or your jet ski or whatever it might be, that a typical residential storage facility would contain, for business purposes, a lot of businesses tend to like having a more portable solution for their storage facility. So it's not a storage unit as far as a brick and mortar type solution, but it is a form of storage. And I think there would need to be some clarification provided in any text amendment on whether or not that storage meets the smell test as far as the code. So I'll let, I'll defer to the, those folks when we're ready for public comment to maybe explain that a little further.
Okay. All right. So with that, how about we go ahead and take the public comment now? That be all right?
Yep, I believe Tracy Brown, you have, you're unmuted. Tracy, if you can hear us, go for it.
Okay. Could you state your name and address?
Yeah, this is Tracy Brown. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Yeah, my name is Tracy Brown. I live in Sandy at 17075 Fur Drive. And up until two, I'm a... two years, I'm a land use planning consultant. And as of about two years ago, I was the planning director in the City of Sandy for about 15 years. I've been hired by Alex Mock, who has property down on Harlow Road there, and that's the reason for my participation in this. And so, as Chris was kind of mentioning, I guess, there's a kind of a wide range of storage needs. And this kind of the niche that Alex is looking at is providing storage for businesses primarily in Troutdale or the surrounding area that need a spot to, you know, put landscape equipment in and things like that. It's not typically the household items that would be associated with more of a self-storage or mini-storage facility. But it's, you know, having a secure and dry space to, you know, to have, to, I guess, an accessory to a business use. A lot of the, I guess, the types of businesses that need this use, they may be working out of their home, or have a very small yard, which doesn't afford them the opportunity to have any equipment that they can then access in a secure way. So, yeah, that's, so we, you know, we're supportive, definitely, of this modification. You know, I think, thinking through some of the aspects that are identified in the staff report, I think are important, how it's defined, and, you know, what sort of structures. I know some of the, I'm sure some of the, as you talk about, you know, the types of structures, your, you know, your design standards would probably kick in on certain types of structures, such as the typical mini-storage, and, you know, if you have dark sky lighting requirements and things like that, those would all be applicable. This is a little bit different, I guess, aspect of it. And what he's using are storage or cargo containers. We have done some research, and I know the City of Portland does allow these. And that's not that you would have to allow them, but these types of containers are very secure, they're portable, and they can be, you know, they're typically affordable spaces for people to rent as well. You know, I'll kind of leave it at that. I don't know if you have any questions for me, I could try to answer as well.
Okay. Don't at this time.
Shirley and I have questions.
Okay. We'll go ahead and allow that. Go ahead, Sandy.
I'm just curious, you mentioned it was on Harlow was one of the properties in question?
Yes.
And is that part of our downtown historic area?
I'd like Chris to answer that. It's in a light industrial zoning district.
Oh, it follows the Harlow Road grid coordinate, but it's north of I-84. It's totally separate from downtown. And let me see if I can pull up the map for you. Yeah.
If you've ever been in, down in that area, there's the existing mini-storage facility that's down there. And this property is just to the south of that, between, basically between the mini-storage and the highway.
Let me see if I can pull a map up here. Can everybody see a map real quick? Should be on a shared screen.
Yes.
Commissioner Priggett had a question.
Is the storage going to be limited and not be storage like for chemicals or stuff they have to use in their business? Because if that's the case, it's going to be a little harder. It might become a fire hazard, and the safety issue would be the key thing.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I'll take a stab at answering that. That's, that would be something that, I don't know all the details of what's, what is exactly stored, but those certainly need, you know, those kind of questions need to be resolved, you know. And looking at City of Portland, they do have guidance in that regard, and they do limit, you know, hazardous materials and things like that. I'm only mentioning that as a possible avenue to look at. But, you know, that's, that is a concern. You know, these containers do afford quite a bit of security in terms of, you know, containment also. So there's, but, you know, those are some questions that need to be resolved, certainly.
Real quickly, just so you're seeing what we're doing on the screen, this black box that we just drew on it, if you're seeing it from the screen, is roughly the area we're talking about, where this light industrial is generally located. So as you can see, it's in between 84 and the airport runway there. Some of it is actually on airport property itself. So it's not a significant area of the city we're talking about where this text amendment could be affected. But it is more than just, say, a single property that Mr. Brown's representing. It's also some other properties in question, too.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Okay, so the next steps, we will try to do our best with an initial draft of a zoning amendment, of a text amendment. Included in that draft would be a proposed definition, so there would be modifications to the definition section of our development code. So we would have a definition for it. We will also suggest, at least for the time being, and that can certainly warrant discussion at the hearing, but at the moment, we'll consider a permitted use. And if you wish to have the discussion on whether that should be a conditional use, you can certainly elevate it at that point. The other thing we'll do, it won't be necessarily baked in, but we can also check in with some neighboring jurisdictions to see if there are any particular design parameters that they may put on these types of facilities, and we can have that as a attachment. And then at the hearing, if you wish to look at that attachment and perhaps incorporate that into the text amendment, then we can consider it at that time. I think that's how we would want to move it forward for your consideration, if that's without any objection.
So are we going to see this before we go to a hearing?
Yes, yes. It'll be, it'll be, because it's a text amendment, we have to let Metro and DLCD notify it. So you'll have advanced copy of what's being discussed. And certainly, nothing tells you you have to do it only in one hearing. You can always continue it if you wish.
But it will be a hearing. There won't be a work session, right?
We could entertain a work session. We do have a concern about a May calendar conflict, which we were going to get into the department report. But if there was a desire to have a work session between now and then, we should establish that tonight, then.
Okay. Any thoughts on that? I don't know how long this would take. I was just thinking we may want to do a work session first, because I think we have design standards to contend with, and then we've got the permitted versus conditional. I don't know. I just think it might take us a little while. What are the thoughts?
I'm open to a work session. And also, Mara says she has a question, but no one can hear her.
Right.
I'm open to a work session as well.
Okay.
I am as well.
Okay. Great. Okay, so we'll go that direction, and we can go ahead and hear from Mara, if that's okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Mara. Hang on one second. Let me see if we can have any. You may have to start your video up, Mara. If you can't hear us, you can type your question. We'll try to enter it for the record.
Hey, there she is.
There she is. Hey, Mara. Don't know if we can hear your audio, though. You may have to turn your audio on.
Doing it?
No.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can. Sorry, we had your phone number posted differently. Go ahead.
Awesome. Not a problem. Thank you. So my name is Mara Lay, and I actually work for Alex Mock. And he's the one that owns the property on northeast Harlow Road in Troutdale. And he currently has containers at the backside of the property. And he owns the property outright. He has containers on the property that some belong to him, some belong to business owners in our community. Some people are paying him to put their container on the property, because they don't have any place to put it, but they need the container for their entity. Most of our clientele actually are business owners. I would say a good 75% to 80% of our clientele are business owners. Most of them have small businesses in Troutdale. Those small businesses are storefronts or very small commercial properties that do not have onsite storage of any type. And I was just talking to one of our clients the other day named Garrett, and he actually rents the most containers from us. He has four containers that he leases for his business. And he's like, you know, this is my warehouse. He said, I don't have any other way of having my big rigs bring in my merchandise unless they're bringing it into, you know, to my mini little warehouses. And that's kind of the way that he sees it. That's also, you know, kind of the way several of our other clientele sees it. And so when it's regarding those mini storages, I know that it's real easy for us to take, you know, the whole storage mindset of, like somebody mentioned earlier, residential people, or someone who, you know, is putting, you know, their lawnmower or their quads in there. And don't get me wrong, we do have two people that have their quads and their snowmobiles and things like that in there. But most of them are business owners. And so I just, I wanted to make sure that everyone understands that they're really utilizing these spaces for business purposes, and to substantiate the businesses that they have ongoing in our community.
So I guess, a question I would have, then, are you looking more at this as warehouse?
Well, and I think that we need to keep in mind that it is truly portable storage. And the verbiage probably should be identified as portable storage. However, a lot of our clientele does look at the portable storage units and their capacity as being their little mini warehouses for their entities.
Some of them have trout business licenses.
Well, yeah, and many of them actually have trout business licenses. I'm actually in the process of obtaining letters of support from each of those businesses, so that we can bring that before you at a later point.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right.
So, Mr. Chair, were we going to entertain a future workshop date? Was that correct?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. And for the members of the public, we can, staff will notify you, so you can be abreast of when that will be. And certainly, we will still continue to try to aim for a hearing, if possible, in June, but our calendar's a little crunched at the moment, so we'll do our best.
All right.
And, yeah, I believe, Mr. Chair, are we moving to the next item on the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So you were free to go. Thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments very much. Thank you.
That's fine. At some point in time, you know, the reason I moved is sanitation down there, because we are a co-op line.
Next up.
Okay, give me one moment to pull up my other screen here. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
We have a Main Street code audit.
We do. Get my shared screen here. I'm going to show you a presentation here, but it's not going to, we're not going to go through the whole, the whole item here. My mouse is not being cooperative right now. Okay, so the other item that we wanted to discuss with you tonight is a project that Troutdale, in coordination with Wood Village and Fairview, are working on. And this is a sub-project of the overall Main Streets on Halsey project. This is a three-city approach to improving the overall vitality and development possibilities along Halsey Street, going all the way through downtown Troutdale and all the way west to 201st and Fairview. I'm on a split screen, which I usually don't do, so please bear with me while I try to make sure we get it right here. Okay, there we go. This, again, this presentation has been lifted from a presentation which actually occurred earlier this evening. There is a technical committee that is involved with looking at this. But this particular sub-project of the overall Main Streets on Halsey project is focused on two things. One is site readiness, which is to develop and implement strategies removing development barriers on key opportunity sites, and a code update. And what they mean by that is, they are inventorying each city's development codes, particular zoning districts, to see, is the code actually being an obstruction to potential creative development possibilities? In other words, codes which may have been developed 10, 20, 30, 40 years ago, are they still flexible? Are they still relevant today? It doesn't necessarily mean that the city must change their code, but they may highlight opportunities where the city may want to reconsider it through a text amendment process. And they're looking at it through the prism of these four particular sites along the corridor that they have identified. And we'll get to Troutdale site here in just a minute. In the project background, this is built on the original Main Streets on Halsey strategic vision and action plan. This is a project that several of you have been working on, partnership between the three cities. This particular project, the site readiness and the code audit, is actually a Metro 2040 grants project-funded project. So each city has a proportionate share of investment and also involvement in this project. You'll see in that map down below, there are four red dots, and those are the areas, the general areas of the opportunity sites along the entire corridor. In Troutdale's case, the opportunity site that we're looking at is the northwest corner of 257th and the Historic Highway, owned by Dean Herford. It is also an opportunity site that the Town Center Committee identified as a pretty critical point. And for those of you who need the recollection, when you're at the traffic lights heading north on 257th, heading toward I-84, it is effectively the vacant property with the Jersey barriers on it, that oftentimes you will see random community signs posted on it. It is a long, skinny property, but a one of pretty unique interest and strategic value. I'm going to skip this slide. I think, well, I'll talk about it very, just briefly. One of the goals of the Halsey project back from 2017 was truly identifying Halsey, and in Troutdale's case, extending it into the Historic Highway, really continuing to flush out the feel of a Main Street. In Troutdale's case, unlike the other two cities, we have a very defined town center, a really defined downtown, and a good Main Street feel. But it is only about three or three and a half blocks long. And the question is, are there opportunities to further extend that feel in the appropriate areas? And one of the reasons we picked the opportunity site that we did is we felt that that could present a nice opportunity to bring downtown across the street. In the town center area, a large number of people live between McMenamin's Edgefield and downtown. And those folks, really, if you think about that stretch, mostly on Halsey, but a little bit on the highway, there's no park. bit on the highway, there's no park, there's no gathering area. You do have what they call the middle housing, really the more intense development. So there's actually a fair number of people, but don't have necessarily the community amenities, the commerce, things that are closer to them. Many of them would still get into a car and drive across 257th to get to where they are. So the question is, can you bring that Main Street feel across the street without disrupting what's happening currently in downtown, but better serve the people to the west and better serve the corridor as a whole? So that's kind of the spirit and intent of this effort. Again, this is a project that is metro funded. We're in April right now. The, there were consultants selected, Cascadia Consulting Partners as the lead consultant. They are a planning and economic firm locally in Portland. They have worked with staff up until this point in kind of crafting where those opportunity sites are. They have interviewed each site's owners, gotten their perspective as far as what they would like to see for the future development of their site. And now they're starting to transition into a public engagement component, and this is the first effort of that. So we're informing you of the project tonight. There will be some additional follow-up opportunities, as well as an online survey for you and for the public at large to participate in. But then with your unique role in Planning Commission, where we'll get interesting for use on the code update and design standard section. So they're looking at the site. They're looking, they've interviewed the developer, what is their particular interest in the site? What they do is then they, they run a pro forma, a development proposal, to see can, what kind of development could actually work on the property? And then once they've established that, then they look at the actual zoning regulations, and they determine where are the pinch points, where might be trouble from, what might prevent this particular development from occurring? And does, effectively then, does the city have an appetite to reconsider it if there are any issues in this case? So they're looking at the opportunity first, and then they're trying to understand what the regulation is and whether or not the regulation is harming it. And then it really becomes a judgment call on behalf of this body and City Council to determine, should we look at our code? If we really want to see, you know, potentially highest and best use, is this in our interest? And while we're focused on the opportunity sites, they're looking at a general zoning district. It's not necessarily site specific when we're talking about the code standards. But that's going to be the second phase. And as you see here, that is about what they're about to launch into, is looking at this code issue. I'll take questions here very soon. I'm almost done with this particular presentation, and I'll try to elaborate on any further ones. So give me just a couple more slides, and I'll turn it back to you guys. Again, I mentioned there will be a public involvement component of it. The survey is expected to be launched here in a couple of weeks. There'll be some data collection efforts. And there will, at some point, be a additional outreach to you as a planning commission, and depending on where we are in the world, and in this pandemic response, the possibility of even a three-city meeting, either with the planning commissions together, or potentially with the city, you know, kind of a larger city, three-city workshop. So I wanted to alert you to that soon, that that could be on the horizon to solicit feedback on. We've gotten the survey information in the champion, so it's going to be in there. And let me go over, I have to skip several slides just to show you again the more specifics on the Troutdale site here.
Do you have the survey?
The survey's still being developed. It hasn't been launched yet. So the site, again, we're looking at 257th and Halsey. Based on the developer interview that they had, the consultants looked at four potential development scenarios. These are very primitive and very early on right now, but the idea of potentially a hotel, mixed use, something like that. Another thing that's not shown in here is the potential for maybe a civic use, which was also highly identified and desired by the Town Center Committee. Again, what they're looking at here is seeing what fits and then running the numbers economically to see, does a project pencil out? So in each of these four right here, they're showing actually a grouping of townhomes on the western edge of this opportunity site. And on the right side, the east side, potential footprints for, say, a hotel or for a mixed use building. That's been flushed out a little bit further. As they've run the numbers and as they figured it out, there are some additional concepts that have been created. One concept has still the townhouse and kind of a mixed use arrangement. That's the one you see on the left there. The one on the right is a refined vision for a hotel with the potential for a civic building at the corner there, at that effort. So tonight, I don't want to necessarily get into the nitty gritty details of that because that will still come as far as what their assumptions are. But I do want to alert you that this is kind of the opportunity site component element of this project. And then based on these renderings, which are still not finalized yet, they are going to be finalized, based on those finalizations and based on the survey responses they get, then we will shift into determining from a code perspective and where your jobs will come in, should any code amendments be considered at a future date. So I wanted to, again, just give a high level introduction to what the project is and warn you that you've got some homework to do here in the next three to six months as this project gets a little bit more refined and as they start to engage the public a little bit more. But most of this work has been working with the opportunity sites and the developer or the owner in particular. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll try to entertain any questions. I know that's a lot to throw at you, and I will have this slideshow once it's condensed because I only received it two days ago. But once it's condensed, I will send it out to the group so you all can look at it a little bit more thoroughly.
Okay. Let's go around and see if you guys have questions at this point. Commissioner Glenn?
I don't have any questions at this point. I guess I'm, we need a little bit more information to get into it.
Sure. Okay. Commissioner Witter?
No questions at this time. It's very 20,000 mile view, so we need a lot more information.
Okay. Commissioner Ramoni?
No, no question whatsoever. I just want to thank Chris to, for, you know, emphasizing time again that we are at the infancy stage of this project. So we have to take everything with no details and the grain of salt. Thank you very much because I think it's relevant. Thank you.
Commissioner Wilcox?
No, I'm going to have to wait to see the slideshow.
Okay.
And we'll have that to you here in the next day or two, folks. I'm, again, I just only got it a couple of days ago from the consultants, so.
Commissioner Kirkett?
I have none at this time.
Okay. And Commissioner Widdell?
It sounds a little ambitious, and we're looking at development and investors. And are we a business friendly state? Is my question.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it comes down ultimately to values proposition, and I mean, that's kind of where your role will fit in because the consultants will identify what could be workable from an economic development perspective and will highlight where, you know, zoning or development standards could potentially get in the way. And then you have that critical question, is how do you balance the interests with opportunity, but with a community expectation for a certain type of development? Again, staff can't do that alone. That's got to come from the wall.
Couple of comments.
Sure.
One is, looking at this, I noticed that they're scheduled, they're planning quite a few meetings of the HC3 group.
Which is meeting tonight.
Okay. And what they're planning is adoption ready code updates. And I noticed that they're meeting a number of times, and then there's one meeting with the Planning Commission for code adoption, and then it's on to City Council. And I, I'm just thinking, this group might want to see a red line. They might want to be more involved in having a clean version brought to them for adoption at one meeting. I think that might be a little hard. The other thing I was wondering, have they talked to developers about these particular proposals?
Yes.
Okay. And they're on board, and even with COVID, or is COVID changing anything?
Well, that admittedly could be a moving target, but, you know, whether or not they could pull a trigger on, you know, doing an immediate investment on a, on a potential scheme, you know, in the next six to 12 months remains to be seen. But the market analysis component of it still suggests that for each opportunity site, there's two in Fairview, one in Wood Village, and one in Troutdale, that looking at the economic studies, looking, you know, and then taking into account existing property owner motivations. And in each case, the property owner, if they don't style themselves as developers, let's put it this way, they would be interested in at least pursuing a development partnership or potentially selling the property to an interest. None of that has, has gone away as a result of, of the pandemic. You know, and it's funny, too, because a lot of these economic assumptions were also made based on construction costs and valuations prior to this whole pandemic coming down. One outcome that could happen is if greater demand for construction activity falls. In some cases, prices therefore would fall, and actually projects might be looking more attractive to pencil out. So if, for instance, somebody's telling you, you need to have five stories to make this project work, well, if your costs per square foot are going down as a result of material going down and labor being in higher demand, or in less demands, and therefore a better negotiated price, maybe you could get away with a four-story. The concern they have really, and again, the code audit component of it, is a lot of times, cities will pass their zoning standards from 10, 20, 30 years ago, and there's not a revisiting of those standards to see, do these standards actually pencil out in current development performance?
Or you could pass your code and then have Salem kind of rewrite your code for you.
Well, that's how we do it in Oregon, yeah. Needless to say, though, it is a good project. It's an interesting one. The city is not being, being held to requiring this passage. It's certainly at the city's discretion right now. But it is a metro funded project. And other than some staff, in Troutdale's case, it's effectively staff time contributing to it, it was worthwhile for us to see it. It helped us understand one of our opportunity sites that we highlighted, and it gets us some, some good detailed information from, from an unbiased source.
I guess it's, it's, it's bittersweet. It's slightly disappointing for me, just because this particular developer was involved when we were writing the code. And now to develop the property, we brought a third party in to kind of make all this happen, and I just, I'm kind of losing the small town feel here, I guess. That's my comment.
That's her. I would say, in our case, he's been quite engaged. We had a meeting with him this afternoon, kind of showing what you were just seeing, and he's frankly quite excited about the possibilities, some of which he had not really considered in the past, or it was an extension of what he always thought. But to now see, see it potentially working out from an economic perspective and understanding how it could work from a siting perspective, it's gotten his hamster wheel turning, let's put it that way.
Okay. Awesome. That's the important thing. Okay.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. We'll move on to department report then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let me just unshare my screen here. And again, thank you, everybody, for your attention and stamina for this tonight. If you have any feedback on how we can do better, hopefully we will not have to do this situation very often, but thank you for making it work tonight. The first thing we need to chat, check in with is the next potential meeting, which normally falls on May, the third Wednesday of May, which in this case would be on May 20th. And in normal years, that wouldn't be a problem, however, because the Budget Committee got delayed from April. The Budget Committee is meeting on Monday, the 18th, and usually uses that Wednesday of that week as a second day for meeting. So my concern is that if Budget Committee is going to take two nights, Budget Committee takes priority over Planning Commission, and we do not have a hearing scheduled, so we would treat it like a workshop. So we would need to pick an alternative date in May if you wanted to still workshop and be on track for, for June. Or you can forego a May meeting, and Mr. Chair, I'll defer to you and the commission on how you want to proceed with that.
I guess I would throw out, I don't know if staff could make this. Could we make the 13th?
The 13th, we would have a Parks Advisory Committee meeting, which I believe would be Zoomed. Logistically, I mean, as far as...
Logistically, it's a problem.
Logistically, it could be a problem. I don't think it's interchangeable, but I couldn't guarantee it right now.
Okay. With Council, Tuesday, is Thursday a possibility for anyone?
From a staff perspective, only the 7th wouldn't work because that's too quick a turnaround, but any other Thursday probably would work.
27th?
I believe Mr. Wittrun has his hand up.
That's the last, I believe that's Town Center. Mr. Witter, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, can we move to the 21st? Just move a day off?
I believe we could, if everyone's okay with that. Can we do that, Thursday, the 21st of May?
I have a conflict on that day.
Okay.
And if I'm the only one, though. And Tuesday, the 19th?
That would be reserved.
I don't believe we have any sort of City Council action that night because City Council wouldn't be meeting that week. But it would be in the middle of budget, and I know two members of this commission are also on Budget Committee, so that may be a lot of meetings in three nights in a row potentially. But I believe the room would be available.
Okay.
The other option would be May 27th, which historically, we'd give the fourth Wednesday to Town Center Committee, although right now with the COVID situation, it's a little up in the air for their meeting schedule, but that's a Wednesday.
28th? Thursday, in case Town Center, you think Town Center?
How about Thursday, the 28th?
Thursday, the 28th? I know this gets close to the holiday. But you guys don't celebrate holidays, do you?
Every day is a holiday now, right?
I knew that was coming.
Cheers.
28th, the Thursday, would that work?
Yep.
One, two, three?
That'll work for me.
Okay. I can't believe you, Paul. Mr. Wilcox, is 28th okay?
Yeah, I'll have to sign.
Okay, great.
We'll shoot for Thursday, the 28th.
We have a winner. Okay.
Great, thank you all.
Great. Thank you very much for being flexible.
Sure. Just a general update also on where the city's at with regards to the virus. We're taking our cues from the state and public health officials, also at the county. The emergency declaration from the mayor is, the mayor basically can extend the emergency for two-week increments. So right now, it's through May 11th. There's probably a good chance it'll be extended through Memorial Day. As far as our operations, our department is fully functional. Our department is, been working largely remotely. You saw Rini earlier tonight, oh, she's still there, but she's at home. Most of us are. We are still doing building inspections on commercial. Residential inspections have been curtailed a little bit, and we've also been diligent in following up on code compliance issues, and we've had a number of them, unfortunately. But Joe's been doing a fantastic job for us on that. So our department continues to function at a pretty high capacity, and I want to give kudos on the record to our staff. They are phenomenal and have been great to work with on it. And I also want to thank the city, the Budget Committee in particular, for their trust in us to purchase the permitting software system that we did. It was a very large investment, but it has absolutely paid dividends. We would not have been as... large investment, but it has absolutely paid dividends. We would not have been as efficient and would not have been able to maintain operations during this without it. I didn't think we expected to use it in such a capacity three months in, but we did.
Are you finding a lot of people using it?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes, there's still a learning curve, and there's a learning curve for staff. It's admittedly a software geared more for building permits, but it's, it's proven a significant time savings, and in a situation like this, it's been critical. And we're operating at a higher level than all of our peer cities. Beyond that, I'll be happy to take any COVID-related questions or any general questions that Commissioners may have.
Any questions for Chris? Concerns, anyone? Comments? Mr. Prickett?
Lately, in our neighborhood, we've had several non-residential people come through and rummage through the recycling that's put out on the curb. I'm not sure if it's something that we should worry about, but it's happened with, we've had it go through our neighborhood the last three weeks.
Is it occurring during a certain time of day?
It's usually on Wednesday, when we, all the recycle cans are out.
Okay.
And I'm not.
Do you know if it's been, sorry?
I don't think it's been reported, but I don't know if we should report it. And people are asking, should they report it? Because they, they think it, because it's on the street, it's not, it belongs to waste management, basically.
Yeah, certainly, if it's placed in the bin, it would be.
I think it's yours until it's picked up.
Could be. We can, we can look at the reality of it, but is it, is it a concern, Commissioner Prickett, of public safety, or, you know, there's that delicate balance of people doing it for bottle collection and refund purposes, or what's the general sense in the community?
Well, the one, the people that I've talked to seem to think it's kind of evasive to them. It, it doesn't feel safe for them to have somebody rummaging, especially if they don't live in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
That's understood, sure. We can, if you, if, you know, unless there's a protest, we can always refer to our Community Resource Officer, Nick Moore. He's kind of our on-point person for things like that. We can ask him to look into it.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Of course.
Okay. Tricia Glanz, I think you have, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I had kind of a question. On, we normally have the, here, and I saw that that's been canceled, for the most part, with the exception of the extra garbage bag pickup. Do you know if that's something they're looking to maybe try and do in the fall? Because I know a lot of, myself and a lot of other neighbors, we keep stuff in a corner of our garage for the large furniture, you know, and big old broken chairs and stuff like that, and it serves a great purpose. So.
Yeah, there's been, there's been some initial discussion. I don't think there's been any firm decisions on that, and obviously, that's got to be coordinated with some other parties, but a fall cleanup event or a late summer cleanup event is certainly in the cards. And if, if it does happen, we'll certainly notify you all of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then the other thing is, I just wanted to say, thanks for Chris for monitoring. I thought this has gone pretty smooth this evening, considering it's our first virtual meeting. And I think having Chris be the monitor has made that big difference.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything? No? Okay. I want to thank everyone for their patience. I know this was a little rough tonight, but we will get better, and hopefully, we don't get really good at this, because hopefully, it ends soon, and we're all back together. But again, I want to thank you all for your patience and your time. And with that, I'd like to ask everyone to please stay safe and well, prepare yourselves and your family, and entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that re-adjourn. Mrs. Sandy's seconding.
Okay. Motion seconded to adjourn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.